So, every good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board, March 25th, 2019. We are going out via ECAT live tonight. So, let's see. First up is going to be continued public hearing for 661 Washington Street. And just before you guys start, I just want to confirm, so I know that Chris and Deb had missed the first meeting when we opened up two weeks ago. And I'm assuming you guys have taken care of that. So, and just now that we're all together, so where this is a special permit, and this is kind of redundant if you were here last week, but so with this project as a special permit, we're going to need a, we need a super majority. And we are without a, an alternate member right now. So, the board, this is what you get, the five of us. So, going forward, first of all, Chris and Deb can't miss another meeting, or they won't be able to vote on it. We need at least four to vote, and they'd have to be affirmative, and you'd have to, so that that can be precarious. And then, you know, same issue if there's, you know, if any of us miss it. So, just, you know, if, if, I'll ask all the board members who are here, you know, I mean, life happens if we have to miss a meeting. If we could just know, if anything comes up, or if you have any anticipated times you're going to miss, the earlier you could let us know, the better, just so we could discuss with Stephanie and your team whether we need to, you know, push it off. I mean, I know we want to go as quickly and efficiently as we can, but we want to, we don't want to, we don't want to run out of quorum. So, anyways, so with that, I'll turn it over to you guys and just grab a handheld mic and.
Scott Farrier from Home Green Engineering for Full Circle Development. This is our second hearing before you folks. We're kind of right in the middle of addressing all the peer review comments that we've received from Woodward and Corrin. As I said last time, nothing jumps out as being a major obstacle. We're just about done with that. We anticipate getting their, getting a revision back to them in the next day or two. But ahead of that, we had a couple of changes that we made as a result of our meeting last, last time, and then we also got a review letter from Ms. Danielson that we made some changes on as well. So, I just wanted to go over those quickly with you folks. We haven't officially uploaded those plans to the permadi, so the things that I'm talking to you about, they haven't been submitted to you folks. We don't have a revised plan to officially give you. We just, we're kind of waiting until we finish all the drainage stuff to submit everything all at once, but figured we'd at least take a couple of minutes just to, to show you what we did. So, a couple of things that came up, the, I think the most important thing that came up at the last meeting was some discussions that we had with the, with the neighbors, particularly at 125 and at 129. And they had a couple of concerns. The first one was we had a dumpster for the residential building proposed right at the corner of those two properties. We, we heard what they said. We've since moved that over to the area where we had dumpsters proposed for the restaurant. So, we've made kind of a large dumpster bank area right there where we have four dumpsters. So, that'll be for the, for the restaurant building number one, and then for the residential building number four, to get those away from, from those two folks in particular. They also had some requests for some screening, so we have shown a stockade fence along that, along that property line, also understanding that it'll be a little bit easier to come to a final determination as to what we do for buffering, once we go out there and do a site visit and see exactly where the, the lot corner is in relation to whatever.
Just while you're on that.
Sure.
So, is there, and I always think of that future, you know, access potential.
Right.
So, what, between that, sort of the peninsula there?
Yep.
No, I'm sorry, going up, I'm going back to dumpsters that you expanded.
Over here, yes.
Yeah?
Yep.
Okay, I missed, I thought you expanded to four.
For the ones where the hand is up on the screen.
Yeah, those are up there, right. So, my question is, so go up here, so what, what do you have for distance between the dumpsters? Look at the plan, look at your paper. Yeah.
There's one right here.
So, what do you have between that landscaping peninsula and, no, the other one? That little peninsula that comes up?
This one here.
Go up, right there, there you go.
Yep.
Between there and the dumpsters. Do you have a two-way traffic room?
Right, it's, it's 24 feet.
Okay.
Right, right, there's a travelway there, sorry. So, that's, that's one change that we made, move the dumpsters, show the stockade fence that we hope to talk about. Couple of other things, we had some questions, I guess, about the, the roundabout, the rotary. We talked to our traffic engineer to try to get some, some ideas. The first one and most obvious one, we're just showing some, some painted flow arrows on the pavement, just to show that everybody takes a right-hand turn around the rotary. And we also reduced the, the travelway in the rotary from 24 feet to 18 feet, just so it doesn't look like a two-way, two-way traffic. It's, everybody's meant to be going around counterclockwise as it is. So, we've, we've done that. That'll be discussed in the traffic report, which we also hope to have for you folks by the end of the week. I think really that was one of the major things that we talked about with you folks. One other thing that, that came up in their review, and I think we did talk about, was some kind of a pedestrian connection over to Settlers Pond. And we just had a quick little plan to show you folks. Again, it's not part of the plan set, but just highlighted in oranges, all of the sidewalks that we have proposed throughout the site. And then we have the condominium building and Settlers Pond. So, you can see, we're kind of showing our walkways going right down to our northwesterly corner, and then kind of ending right there. So, we would need some kind of help to get a connection over towards Settlers Pond, you know, to make that kind of a connection happen. So, we just wanted to at least show you folks that we've, you know, we've heard your comments and, you know, would like to do something like that, and I think it's kind of out of our hands as far as making the actual connection. I think really that's it, Ms. Jeff.
Okay, great. So, just a little, as I continue to recuperate, I sit around and look at plans all day. So, just a little housekeeping on a couple of things. I just, I noticed on your plan, this is kind of a small thing, but just sheet C2.
Yes.
Just, you have the wrong parcel number. The, the one that had the house on it is actually parcel 100, not 102.
Okay.
They both say 102, so just.
Okay, sure.
Just to clean that up. And I wanted, I wanted a little clarity. I wasn't sure. Back, I remember, we, you know, we've met on this quite a few times, and I, I was looking at a few, I was looking at Stephanie's report, and I said, 22 units, man, I thought we had more than 22. And I, I think maybe she just, because there's actually, your plan shows 28 units, 22 in the apartment building, exclusively apartment building, five in building number two, and then the existing house.
Right.
And then, but then I remember, if you look at the bylaw, because I always thought we're going to have 30 units, and you're going to have 20, but I know Ed was, you know, we were talking about this that day. So, bylaw is, is, so you have 168,644 square feet, which comes out to 3.871 acres. So, it's eight units per acre. Comes to just, comes to 30, comes out to 30.97. Eight, for the folks at home, bylaw allows for four units per acre, or eight if you do a local action, you know, if you hit the affordable. So, just, because I asked you that the other day, and we thought you'd maxed it out.
Yep.
So, I just wanted, and then, and Stephanie, I just, I noticed on your report, you had eight, I think you doubled up ahead of time. You talked about how the bylaw says eight per acre and 16 per acre if affordable, but it's four and eight. So, I just, just, I kind of wanted to get everything tuned in, just for folks that, you know, just so there's no.
That's true, yeah.
And I think, and I think at one point, we had actually talked about making the house a multifamily home as well, but we changed our mind in keeping it the same, so that would be one short at that point.
Oh, so you're thinking of making it a duplex?
We were talking about doing that one more.
Yeah, well, however you do, I mean, just.
Would make more sense to put it in that third level.
Right, I mean, if you do it a duplex, then we just have to do it as a, that's another special permit, whatever, so. But I just wanted to, we should just, because I know we want to expedite this, we should just get the unit number, stare it out.
We've definitely decided on a single family, we're just going to stay a single family.
Right.
That's been decided.
And then we.
It's just a matter of capturing two, two more units for building one, and then on that third level.
And what was, what was the, you were talking, you know, you were just talking about the two paths to set, what is that little, I meant to ask the last, what's that little square in the corner?
Uh.
Is that anything?
No, just.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just random lines?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, it's not a, not a concrete pattern.
No, the, the actual square.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I should just tell you, this week I'm calling Eastern Cultural to get a dialogue going with them.
Oh, I saw the, I saw the clay model of the giant shovel.
The giant shovel? We're going to make it a hole, but it would get misconstrued.
Well, that's good, sure, yeah, great. And I, I recently viewed the relics of Dean Mill, too, so.
Oh, great. Is that what we're calling it?
Artifacts, artifacts, right. So, so Chris and Deb, since you guys weren't here last time, I'll put, let you guys go first, if you have any.
Sure.
We were just raptured.
So, in listening to the meeting from two weeks ago, I know that you guys had talked about a potential bus stop location, if there's going to be some sort of like shelter or something off Depot Street. Is that something that's been thought about further? Or not yet?
We haven't decided yet, right?
Right.
We talked about eventually there's going to be some accommodation made, but it's not there yet.
Nothing, one more.
That was the only thing that I had from last time.
Deb, you have?
No, I don't have anything.
Did you say no?
No.
Okay.
I had a couple items. Ed, you may have already answered this in the previous meeting, I just don't recall. Did you, have you selected a material for the shaded area of the roundabout?
Not, you know, not full, we're figuring it's some kind of a paver.
That's what I was wondering, are you planning on like a paver?
Yeah, yeah, some kind of a paver, whether it's a cobblestone or something.
Traffic a little bit, or, all right. And have you, so I understand that you don't have the ability to, you know, further the walking path beyond your property edge. Have you contacted the condo association?
Once this all gets approved, that was going to be my next stop, would be to reach out to, I think I had mentioned to you, Stephanie, that I was going to reach out to the association to see if they were open to a walk easement that would go around. It's right now, it's all grass anyways, it's a complete grass line all the way to the, to the back of the property line, so.
So, when you say, when, once this is approved, are you talking about preliminary plan, or are you talking, once you receive the planning approval?
Yeah, so then I can go to them and say this is going to approve.
I see, okay. So, before, before we're done here, we'll have some idea whether or not there's connection to be had?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, I know that in our last conversation, we talked about getting feedback from the state for the entrance. Have you heard anything back from the state yet, or?
No, we, we have to file with MassDOT for.
Because you haven't filed.
Right, exactly. So, we haven't, we don't have anything from them.
Is that something that's going to happen during this process?
We're filing this week, so, yes.
You're filing this week?
Yep.
That's all I have.
So, are they, are all the spots nine-foot wide parking spaces?
Yes.
And is that, are we good with that before things need to?
The chair is probably the person that has the, the biggest issue with that.
I remember, I brought that up at the last meeting, and I assumed we were going to be changing it, so.
I see, okay. I have to, I confess that I've drawn a lot of nine-foot parking spots my day.
It's in the bylaw. We figured we could apply to the bylaw, see where the design took us, and then.
The bylaw is 10 by 20. People get confused a little bit, but there's.
Well, I'm saying is that if we're going to have to remove the parking spots around to accommodate that, then.
It would, it would just be a waiver at that point, because I think we're pretty, we're spot on now.
Yeah.
You're spot on with the nine-foot.
Yeah, but now there's been a discussion about tandem for, you know, there's been some discussion, I think it was you, Greg, that raised the issue, parking.
Yeah, usually is.
He's, he's the light guy, I'm the parking guy.
Right, that's right.
About parking for the residents and having that dedicated, or we need to probably flush that out.
Yeah.
And just on the, on the connection to Settlers Pond, does, does the condo association, do you know, I'm not sure if you know, Stephanie knows, but does the condo, do the condos go all the way to the pond, and there's just a sort of a, like a.
My recollection from being out there is there's actually a grassed area.
Well, there's a sign, but I mean, who, but who actually owns that land? I was wondering how that works.
I think the town owns a small portion around the pond.
Okay, right.
I don't think we, and then the town owns a piece of land on the other side of the pond, it's all overgrown, yeah.
Is there the ability to walk around the pond? I haven't been out there.
Three quarters of it, I think, and one side is swampy.
Excellent. Oh, good.
And just, you went over sort of, let's, on say the Washington Street side and on the Depot Street side, on, you know, on the street, but I guess, I'm having trouble kind of sort of picturing, I know we all know what the buildings are going to look like either yet, but, you know, how things are really, how it's going to look from the street, really. I mean, I guess it all comes down to how the buildings look.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a design aspect, and I'm not sure we're going to be able to know that tonight, or hopefully we'll be working with, trying to come up with some solid architectural styles that will make everybody happy. And I think we're, we're going there, we're heading to that.
I mean, you know, we know there's a sidewalk in front of each of the buildings, a lot of lawn between that sidewalk and the existing sidewalks out on Washington Street.
Yeah, and we have space to work on the landscaping.
Right, right, exactly.
And the same on the Depot Street side, looks like there's.
Yeah, there's actually.
There's a grass.
Yeah, a lot more green space between building three and Depot Street.
What are those shapes that are on the Depot Street side of that building?
Uh, right here?
No, actually on the, on the green, on this part that's depicted green on other plans. Just my plans.
With a hand in some.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right in there. Just my plan's.
Oh, okay, that, that's a transformer.
Transformer.
Right, that's a transformer, and then the squiggly thing is just a snow removal area.
All right. And so, I think before the meeting, you mentioned that, you know, if we set up a sidewalk, then you have, you have it almost staked out, or you have it staked out, so are the, is the property corner at the old dumpster location, or off the, off the apartment building, is that staked out?
Um, it isn't.
But it's.
Okay, because we, well, we talked about going out there to see how it, how it all lays out.
Right, we'll, we'll have it staked before we schedule a site visit, right.
Can you identify, you know, mine's got the three points that you're going to stake for the walk? You're going to do four now.
Uh, I mean, we can stake everything, I, I thought the.
We talked about the four on the bottom of the.
Right, exactly.
The southwestern corner, southwestern corner.
Right, we felt like that was the most important thing, just with these two above us, but certainly up there, I mean, you can pretty much see.
No, yeah, I had more on that.
Yeah, but we were figuring on doing that, basically that whole westerly lot line. Everything else is, is pretty obvious, within a couple of feet of where the lot line is, certainly close enough to talk about, but.
And then just, just the overflow pipe that one of the neighbors mentioned on that, either, it's not going to be part of the.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not an overflow pipe, it was a contour that runs through the, the property to the side. There is no overflow onto the neighbor's property.
Okay, so the side, it's going to, it slopes the other way anyway, so it's not going to overflow into that section.
Exactly, yep, that's correct.
Okay, that's all, thanks.
Just one thing I forgot. I know there's a photometric plan, and I know J is light, but I could not find, this is my magnifying glass at home and my little 11 by 17 plan, but I couldn't find a, a pole light on there, so I'm assuming there just aren't any yet. And are we maybe going to show that on a landscaping plan for a little more clarity instead?
Yeah, the, the lighting plan, I just, we're trying to get the, the lighting manufacturer just sends us a PDF, so we can't do anything. We were hoping just to kind of take their lights and blow them up, so they'd be a lot bigger, so you could see it, but we can't do that. So, they told us today, they'd be sending us the, the AutoCAD file today, tomorrow, so obviously we can get it, but these are the locations, this is, you know, the two restaurant buildings in the front, residential building in the back, so those are where we have lights proposed.
Okay, so I just think maybe for the next meeting, because I know that like, the bollards you can see up on the entrance sign, but.
Yes, yep, yep.
I think, especially, you know, remember back in one of the pre-meetings, I talked about like, at one point you had some around the circle, but it didn't really make sense, so I.
Right, right.
We just, if we could get those on a plan somehow, just so we can, so the board can review that next time.
Yep, that would be fine.
Um, you guys, Steph, do you have anything?
Um, just a couple, there were some planned deficiencies, which I think, Scott, you said you addressed, but just to make sure, the, the plan notes that the zone is the QCIT Smart Growth Overlay District.
Yep.
In fact, it's the QCIT Commercial District C.
We did change that.
And it does note, there is no required minimum lot size, and of course, GCP does require a 40,000 square foot. And I mentioned the setback, which you'll be seeking.
Yep.
Yep, which we're all.
In bike racks.
In bike racks.
But we have bike racks shown on the plan that you'll see.
Yeah, I know Wayne brought that up in the last.
Thank you.
The indoor ones, you know, for the residential building, have to work that out once they go a little further with the, with the building plans, but we do have them shown at each of the buildings, a bike rack outside.
See, I, I did mention, it looks like, one, you have snow removal right against the existing residential?
Right.
Not.
We get rid of that entirely, not on.
I, oh, not on my plan, but you have it on your plan. So, not just the butter, but also the existing residential.
Right, yep.
Okay. And then, you know, some way of connecting that, like a little walking path to the rest of the development?
Connecting.
So, I, were you planning on having some kind of screening or fencing between the existing residential and the rest of the development, but at the same time, wouldn't you want like a walking path from that residence into the development itself?
To be able to get in, yep.
Otherwise, they'd need to go out on Depot Street and around, or?
Yep, that makes sense, we can do that.
You know, wear a path where you wouldn't necessarily want one. And I just had a question, well, not a question, thoughts about the traffic in, you have. So, you, we have the Washington Street entrance. You have, of course, a through and a right.
Yep.
Turn, and then a left turn, but that's crossing four, three line, lanes of traffic to get over, or to, at least two lanes of traffic to get across there.
Right.
And I didn't know if the board might want to consider having that, just a right-hand turn, and then any left-hand traffic. I know you'd have to go into and around and enter, exit on Depot Street.
That's why I was asking about the state. I was, that's why I was asking what the state had to say, to be honest, because I, I figured.
That came up the last.
And, and I mean, people, you do have a clear line of sight, but people are coming up fast to that intersection, even, even though they know it's.
For years, that's how, and it was more dangerous because there were multiple curb cuts along that line.
At least now, you have funnel people to one side.
Right, right.
The other thing that works in favor is.
The other, the other aspect of that, though, is that you're going to have a, we hope, there's going to be a lot more interaction, and you're going to have a lot more people coming in and out.
I, I will tell you, I totally, that sometimes I get gas at that gas station, still can't figure everyone's, and I take a left, but because of the light, stopping the traffic really helps tremendously.
You can, you have a chance to get in.
Yeah.
And I figured the traffic report is going to, I would expect that they would.
Address that.
Think about that and consider that.
And it's no different than pulling out of De Angelos across the street and taking a left going south on Washington, right? Which, that is actually.
Every Plaza on 138 has to.
Yeah, you know, the same issue.
I think the light, the light, it's not like 123.
I think we benefit from the light, we pull it to it actually.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think so.
And to Wayne's point, I, you know, be curious who the state says.
It's going to be, the state's going to decide on something like that, probably.
So, and Greg, I think I did, because I, I spent a lot of time on, on the four bedrooms, I mean, the four units versus the density bonus of eight, I think I do have it correctly, and you may have been looking at the number of eight bedrooms with the density bonus of 16, because I kept looking at it as I was writing it, going, okay, am I doubling, or, you know, where I shouldn't be?
Oh, you're right, it's bedrooms, yeah, you're right, so.
Yeah, and then, so the bylaw requires that two-thirds of the total gross space is for office, retail, or restaurant, where mixed use is being proposed, and the calculations show that you're under that one-third, so that looks fine. But it also states that if you're phasing a project, you need to build out in the same proportion, so I think that's something the board needs to take into consideration. And, and then exactly how you want to phase this, because what they're asking for is approval for the site plan, and then come back for the, although you've shown a lot of landscaping, if, if that's your full landscaping plan, but also for the designs, the elevations, and so.
I think at that point, you would present a, a whole plan on phasing.
Yep.
If you liked distractions.
And I, I think that, you know, that would be my recommendation to the board, or, you know, to make sure you have a discussion about that, but how do you want to see that, so that that decision can lay out clearly what your expectations are.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I, well, I don't, I mean, the bylaw really doesn't give us, right, I mean, we don't have any power over phasing, we can have a phasing plan, but I mean, the bylaw talks about two-thirds and one-third, so that's really more a matter of it being administered at, when the building permit goes out, because that's not going to come to us, you know? Right? I mean, one, think about, we approved this.
Bylaw doesn't know.
We approved this, we approved the building, so six months from now, a year from now, you guys go to pull a building permit, it's not coming back to us, it's going to the building department. So, I'm assuming there's going to be a mechanism in place where, whether the building department does it or it kicks back to Stephanie's office, they're going to look and say, okay, match up, there's two things, first of all, these, do these plans match up what was approved? Does the site plan match up what was approved? And then, is it, okay, whatever's being applied for, is it a minimum of two-thirds, you know, 66, is it 67% commercial? That's what it has to be. And, and then, you know, so let's say you do one, then when the second building goes, it always, it can never be, it always has to be, it always has to be a minimum of two-thirds commercial, so.
I think the bylaw is what the bylaw is.
Right, so that's, that's, but my point is, that's not.
Keep passing.
That doesn't fall on us, that's, you know, because those don't come back to us, you know, that goes, that falls on the.
Well, we could, I mean, maybe not, on a, depending on the project, you could have a say on phasing, depending on if there were different sections of the, you know, property being developed that didn't really, didn't really seem like it made sense to do.
But I disagree, because if we, again, there's no, so let's, we approve this, but we want you to building one first, and then building three, and then building five, that's illegal. We, we cannot, the planning board by MGL cannot tell you what order to build buildings in it. That's not handled in the special department. So, it's the, it is the zoning enforcement official, which in this town is the building department, the building inspector or building, what's his?
Inspector, yeah.
Whatever his title is, is it, I think it's a bigger title, anyways, that's where it falls, you know, so, now, it's, it's, the onus is on Town Hall to make sure it, it's
you know, so, now, it's, the onus is on Town Hall to make sure it's done properly and hopefully that'll happen.
Well, again, we hope, to Ed's point, to have a phasing plan that everybody kind of is on board with at a minute.
Sure.
There are gonna be things that happen during construction, efficiencies that happen in the field, and, you know, we just want to be able to have a little bit of flexibility about phasing, but we could take care of most of every, most of the thought pattern anyway.
You want to see, look at everyone's calendar?
Well, no, I need to cook it up to the audience. So is everybody on the table, everybody sat? So is there anybody in the audience that had any questions or comments? Six, six, okay, if you just grab a mic and identify yourself for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Donna Masson. I live at 19 Welsh Road, Village on the Pond, so I am one of the butters. So we did have a meeting before I came here this evening. One of the questions, couple of questions, was the walking path that you had talked about, because we, about all around there, you cannot walk around the pond. It's not, to the right side of our property, there is, there's a feed that comes in from under Washington Street. The pond is, is spring-fed, so you cannot walk all the way around. So we were curious, when you talked about a walkway coming out to us, where it was going to be and how it was going to affect us. And another one of the questions they had was having to do with the sewerage. And when it comes down, does it tie in just onto you? It comes down from County Road and it goes to your property, it doesn't affect anybody else's, correct?
Correct.
So we won't, in some instances, you would be assessed, the unit, the owners would have been, would be assessed, this would not be the case?
I can't speak for the town, but the agreement that we've had put together, no other residential areas would be impacted when this bring it down.
So it's coming just to the project and not affecting anybody else, correct?
Not affecting any residential units, there could be a couple of commercial units that want to tie into it in the future, like De Angelos Plaza, even where they would have the option to tie in, because they're actually helping us bring it down by giving us that easement.
Right.
But that's their, their right to do that, the town will allow them to do it, but it wouldn't impact any bedements or anything like that on County Lane or, I mean, on, on your...
On Welsh Road, right.
Anything on, on Washington Street as well.
Okay.
It's a private easement that's being brought out.
Perfect, okay, that's what we thought.
If I could just add a little bit to that, because, and because it is a private feed that's being brought down, the town is, is not incurring a cost, and that's why bediments are assessed, because it's a way for the town to pay for at least a portion of the cost, and because the properties are being bettered, that's the mechanism that they use to do that.
Well, I thought...
But the town isn't paying, so they're not incurring an expense.
So it's privately paid for?
Right.
Okay, that's, I think that's about it, we'll just...
Are you clear on the walkway, though, after seeing how Scott pointed it out?
No.
Okay.
I couldn't really see the map, so...
So maybe Scott could point out what we would like to see happen with your...
Because I think what happens, where, where we are, we're up against you, so all behind, can you see it too, because in fact, yeah.
So it's this line here, right?
Right, we are here.
That's all grass, right? This whole section, grass?
Yes, because this is Unit 46, this is the old building, this is all grass, and there's not a whole lot of room here between this and here, it's pretty tight.
Okay.
That's where your property comes out.
Right.
Because we're really tight, there's a very low row of trees, it's kind of...
Yeah, it's green, but it's just...
Yeah.
This is your property here, right, this one here?
And 129 now on the long.
Oh, yeah, yeah, this one?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
So we're here, and then come all the way up to the pond.
Yeah.
We go to the pond this way and to the pond this way. And I think there is, I think we do have, the town has an easement to get to the pond if they need to, but it's in the middle of, like, over here, so it would go like through here. But anything else would be on, I don't know how you put sidewalk, it'd be on...
No sidewalk.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the thought was, and you can correct...
Oh, you guys gotta use a mic.
Okay.
I was gonna say, the thought was that to have some type of walking trail to go around the pond, and that we were gonna donate some benches for people to sit and have a nice spot to like read a book or something like that, but to your point, and I haven't been out to myself personally, and I wanted to wait until this was all approved, before we approached your association for a walking easement, but maybe it would make sense to take a walk out there and see, but in any case, if there's no really room for what we're saying, then it's probably a mute point, so...
And just, and just so everybody understands how this works, we only control, we don't approve anything off-site. He, you know, Mr. Welch has the right, he can, he can put a walkway right up to his property land and end it.
Right.
But we don't approve anything to happen on your property, we can't, you know, so if, if and when anything happened, that, that would be the two entities getting together and working out, but that, yeah, that would be, we won't be approving, we won't be approving anything to happen, that happens on your land in this project.
You may want to consider, you might want to consider that people that are living in your development may want to access the retail or the other amenities that would be on this adjacent, adjacent property, so you might, you might consider that, you know, the walkway could go either way as far as that, and instead of having people crudging kind of over, over a stone wall or through the woods or something.
Another question was on the residences, those are, those are apartments, correct?
Correct.
You're, you're being the landlord?
Yes.
Okay, all right, they weren't sure if they were, if they were condos, if they were, they were apartments, and five in the, on this building, two, correct?
Right now, there's 22 in the back building, closest to everyone's property that's here, and then the front building is scheduled for five, but the question was, will we get in?
Microphone, microphone.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So the, the back building that's closest that abuts, to the butters is the 22, the 22-unit building, and then up front, right now...
I think we won $29,000.
And right now, the front building has five units on the second and third floor, that may end up becoming seven units, but that would be the most.
Is audio working, Wayne? You guys, okay. I know, just a million lights are flashing, yeah, I guess we're good.
Okay, all right, yeah, does that answer your question? Okay.
I'm still traumatized by the aggressiveness of ECAT, so...
One other, I know we talked about scheduling a site visit, and Scott was gonna stake off those locations, is this an appropriate time to check everyone's calendars and see if we could get something scheduled this week, if possible?
Yeah, we'll do it at the, so, so is that it from the audience? I just want to tie, tie this up, so, yeah, and just back to, everybody good here? So, yeah, so when, when, do we want to do it?
So we got two things, schedule the next meeting.
Yeah.
Because we'll have the change plans, and then we'll have the site meeting, hopefully between now and the next meeting.
Yeah, so next meeting, I mean, is our next meeting in two weeks or three weeks?
Two.
Two?
The eighth, equal eight.
So you come back then?
We'll come back the eighth if we can get this site block in. And the meeting is, would you consider this a meeting for...
What, sidewalk?
Meeting versus...
It's just a sidewalk, right?
It's just a sidewalk, it's not, it's just for informational purposes. We won't be answering any questions, it's, you know, not, it's not posted, it's nothing like that.
No deliberation.
If you, if you want the butters to come, you're, well, you're welcome to invite them, but that's, we can't do that.
Sure.
And just before, Scott, if you don't mind, going forward to the next, the next meeting, if you don't mind bringing maybe just a couple large format plans, because these are so slow, it's kind of useless, and they got the 11 by 17, but just, just, you know, I can't help but...
The 11 by 17s don't work.
Oh, you want the full?
The 11 by, yeah, just a bigger one, just for what we have going forward, you know, the last final ones, just, just a couple of them, we don't need one for everybody, we don't have room, but just sometimes it's a little easier, if you don't mind, so, all right, so when do we, so we have two weeks to do the next meeting, I mean, to do the sidewalk, right? So let me ask the board, because we, I mean, everybody has lives, everybody's busy, I know not everybody could come, but I wanna, or can't always come, but is, let's get a consensus, is, should this, I'm assuming this should probably be an afternoon to an end-of-the-day meeting, or an early morning meeting, first of all, and then...
Depends on the date for me.
Okay.
Afternoon.
Afternoon, what about you, afternoon good for you guys? Sure.
I can do late afternoon.
Yeah, yeah.
Is one, later?
Yeah, right, okay, so then, when do we want to do it? It's either this week or next week, right, so, ideally, anyways.
Fourth in the afternoon, late afternoon?
Fourth?
It doesn't work for me.
We want you to be there, Steph.
I have Tuesday and Thursday, I have five o'clock meetings.
Third?
If we did a week from today.
Third's fine with me.
Third works for me.
If you're...
Third works for me.
Third's one.
Deb, you can't...
I cannot do the, you were talking about the first?
Yeah, but we, third works.
I can't do the first, I can do the third.
You can do the third, Pete, can you do the third?
Yeah.
Like, Wayne, you said you can, can you do the third?
It works.
All right, so the third...
Wednesday, Wednesday.
We'll say the third at four, 4:30.
The later the better, because I'm gonna have to work early.
Five? Yeah, I was gonna say five, just still plenty light, and that lets everybody, somebody's guys traveling a bit.
Not that we would get lost, but we can probably, you know, enter on the Depot Street side, next to the existing white building there.
If somebody can't find us...
We could park in the white building.
Then they have no right being on a board that reads plans, so...
We can meet at the white building, you know, walk through red property, where else property?
Yep. What time are we meeting?
Five o'clock on the third.
Five o'clock, okay.
Rain or shine.
Sounds good.
And the, and the next hearing is the eighth.
Yeah, then you guys are gonna, and you're gonna stake just that western property line at four points?
Yep.
Great. And, because I know at the last meeting, there was discussions, especially with the neighbor, that, are you okay if they come?
Absolutely, yeah, I want them to.
All right, so y'all heard the time, you're all welcome to come, but we just, we can't, planning board won't, we won't be answering any questions, because that's a violation, we just go out, we may ask a question, for, you know, it's informational purposes only, so just, so just FYI, we can't, we can't deliberate. All right, so how about a motion to continue to our next meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to continue till our next meeting.
One second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, motion passes. Gentlemen?
Again, Fred.
See you next week.
Next up is continued site plan review, Wagon Tail Dog Services, 50 Washington Streets.
Four.
The third, 5:00 PM, I did that right, okay. Hear ye, hear ye. Well, you guys cleared the room?
Yeah.
Yeah, good luck throwing it up.
The 18th plans, the ones that you're going to be looking at?
Yes.
The 18th, yep, all right.
Oh, when you're ready, I'm sorry, feel free, I thought you said...
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, Scott Farrier from Home Green Engineering for Wagon Tails. We're here before you folks, as I'm sure you remember, a couple weeks ago, we hashed out some things, I think we came up with a final design, which we have before you, as far as parking, layout goes, and driveway. We also came up with a little bit of a new drainage design after all the discussion we had, we kind of went back to the drawing board, came up with a little bit of a different drainage design, which we have since finalized all the calculations and sent them ahead to Beta, the consultant for the project, we haven't heard back from them yet on their review, but we figured we'd at least spend five minutes just showing you exactly what we did, and hopefully at the, the next meeting, we come back with a blessing from Beta and we can move on with the project. But what we ended up doing is proposing an infiltration basin above ground, and that southeast of the corner of the property. So that, in addition to a little bit of a leaching area, all the other stormwater management requirements have been met, but that area above ground just allowed us to, to save a whole bunch of the subsurface drainage, which was really kind of expensive and cost prohibitive for, for Julie going forward, so this is a lot better economical system for us. And it's, it's relatively shallow, it's, it's not designed to hold water, there's no issues that way, we've, you know, went back and forth on it, because it's shallow, it'll be routinely maintained and in mode, so there shouldn't be any, any mosquito issues or anything like that at all on, on the design. And we'll still have the, the buffering around it with the fence, so there'll still be screening around it from the neighboring property. So really, that's it, everything else stays the same as it was discussed last time, the double entry points, entry and exit point off of Washington, then the single driveway for loading, unloading off of Calvin Road, that hasn't changed since our last discussion.
Okay. Yeah, so I bet you're just waiting on the peer review, basically, right?
That's it, figured I was gonna be here anyway, so...
Sure.
Julie has nothing else to do, so we...
Any questions or comments on that?
No, no, we, they deposited the peer review fee on Wednesday, I know that Phil from Beta had started looking at it, and I, again, I think based on what Scott's proposed here, I don't see any major, you know, there might be some minor tweaks, but that's...
There's always minor tweaks.
What I would, yeah, about what I would expect.
Sure.
Anybody on the board?
So, how, um...
Besides Peter?
I guess say like, you know, below the, below the Calvin Road driveway, how, how low does the detention infiltration basin go from that?
It's just a couple feet deep.
And it's gonna be plant, like, grass planted, so...
Right.
In a big rainstorm, it'll...
It'll fill up and it drains, so... Right, in the, actually, in a hundred, it goes up, I believe it's a foot and a half, and it drains dry, and I believe it's 28 hours under the 100-year storm event, it'll be completely dry.
Is it, is that lower than, say, like, the neighbors, number one?
I mean, all, all the properties are roughly at the same level, this is kind of a, actually, I shouldn't say that, this is a little bit of a natural lower area already.
Okay, right.
Everybody's a little bit higher than, than we are, so...
Okay. I see one of the notes that said the acoustic fence is gonna be around Player 3, for instance, is it everywhere that that fence line is gonna be, or is it just, yeah, right about where your finger is?
Yep, yep, I believe the acoustic fence is just gonna be basically along the perimeter, not within the existing, not within the, each individual play area.
Right, yeah, just in between the butters.
Right, so really, just around the perimeter.
Just on that.
Right, exactly, but...
So you probably want to adjust that note, then, right?
Um...
Because it's, right now, you're calling, right now, you're calling...
It does go to that, right, well, yeah, yep, yep, we, I think we were just kind of pointing to that area, just figuring, but, yeah, we'll, we'll get, yeah, we should eliminate it in that place, we certainly should.
And when you talk about fencing around the infiltration basin, you're just, you're just talking about the perimeter fence around the property line, right? You're not gonna put another fence around the infiltration.
Right, no, exactly, right, just the perimeter fence, right, we don't want to fence in basins.
Yeah, yeah. And, I guess I'm missing, what is the, what is the planting in the bio, bio-retention area? It's this, the seed, oh, seed planting schedule? Is there?
There is. There should be a plan.
A plan of that?
Yep. Doesn't look like it may, it doesn't seem, yeah, right, right, just for the bio-retention area, it doesn't specify, so we'll make sure we add that, then.
Did, any, do you know what it is, or do you have to figure it out?
Yeah, off the top of my head, I'm not sure what, what they propose at that, what we have proposed, though.
Right up, okay.
You all set?
Yeah.
Anybody else? So, we should just continue on that meeting?
Please.
Right, hopefully, we'll have it all set for you.
Hopefully, we can wrap it up in two weeks.
Want to bring this one home?
Motion to continue for two weeks.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Appreciate your patience. Right, next up, Mr. Heikle.
Did, um, we leave?
He was here, right?
What, he's working over there?
466 Foundry.
They can...
They were, yeah, they were gonna investigate. They're aware of it.
Huh?
They're aware of it, we're talking about...
That would just be nice and cool.
Yeah.
For a president.
Yeah, right.
He did two loops.
All right, yeah.
I can tell you, you needed a smoke. Why don't you sit there so you can use the microphone, or you can hold it, I don't care, but... The floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Michael Heikle, I, I was approved about a year and a half ago.
Michael, can you speak up?
I was approved, um...
That is not, that is...
The mic's fine, she's, she can't hear you.
Doesn't, oh, amplify the sound.
It only records for ECAT. Oh, I see, I see, okay, so I was, I was approved about, about a year and a half ago on 466 Foundry Street for duplex, and I had heard last year about, I got information about the sewer extension, I have five corners for the sewer connection, and I was hoping to, requesting an extension for that, to build a duplex, until I spoke to Mr. Blanchard, and he mentioned that I think they're starting either this year or next year with the sewer, sewer line, and I'd like to be able to connect to it, so I want to time everything so it's at the same time, instead of waiting for a year to, the project would just be a bit, a bit far out for me, as far as the approvals are till the end of October, I think, it expires on my approval, and I'm looking to get an extension for that, so...
How long would the extension be for?
I think Mr. Blanchard said it goes into 20, 20 to 21, or I think they're starting...
So they're starting this year?
Yes.
And I think it's a two-year project.
Yes.
That's three years.
So 19, three years should be sufficient for the extension.
Is that too much for anyone?
So, well, I'm just, because I know you, are you gonna build, because I know you, you were marketing it, and in fact, because we'd sat down with some people that were it, and in fact, because we'd sat down some people that were gonna do things other than a duplex, so I'm just wondering.
No, not on that, that was just gonna be a duplex, but.
No, not the folks that we met with, well, whatever, that doesn't matter, but.
At this point, that was, that's my goal to.
Can we legally? Isn't there a set period we can extend it for, or?
I think you can.
Extend it for as long as we want.
I think you can extend it, yeah.
It's just, plus it's more.
Just do it year by year if you wanna.
Yeah.
Say, how you doing every year?
I'm sure you'd appreciate that.
What's that?
I mean, if we can do it for more, that's fine, I just.
Now, we have talked about that before, I don't think we ever really got clarification. I think it was Walter at, you know, the barber shop on Washington Street was looking. For an extension, and we had a discussion about that. Well, I'll make a motion to.
I just, just for, I just, my only concern is, let's say we extend it for two or three years, and that's fine, and you think you're all set, and then three years from now, you find out that it's illegal, we can't.
Town council is in tomorrow, and I can check it.
So why don't we, we can vote whatever we devote, and then we can always change it if we have to, you know, but.
I'll just say three years or a lesser amount if we have to change.
Well, just, three years, and then we just tweak it, if it doesn't work out, we redo it.
Motion to grant the request for an extension to 466 Foundry Street Special Permit Duplex.
For three years from the original date?
Three years from the original date.
That puts me into.
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion?
That, yeah, can I?
Did you say something?
Can I say something?
Yeah.
So that, just so I know, so where does that put me at as far as?
That only gives you two more years, right?
Right, so it'll be.
Didn't we just say three years?
Yeah, it was three, it'll be three years.
But three from the original date is.
Only one.
Well, I meant from the original date of expiration.
No, it would be from the expiration, yeah, I think is what, how you would.
So what's the date of expiration, do we know?
October, October, I think, I recorded everything, so it was all done back in October.
It's two years from the time you recorded?
Yes.
2017.
Yeah, October, somewhere October 17.
So we say five years from the original, from the original recording date? Or do we have the, it's not paperwork, maybe we have the date in front of us, right? That'd be four years.
I think you usually, well, extensions usually are based on the expiry date.
August 2017?
Yes. Yep, then I went to.
So do we, is there, do we know what the original expiration date is? That's my question.
It's gonna be October.
It's a two-year, they're two years.
Two years from the date that it was.
And so you should probably actually extend it two years and not three years. And then if you need extra time, you can come back.
So this, yeah, this is, this is stamped in at the registered deeds, 10/2017.
That's the one, yeah.
But.
Because I have to wait to 20 days.
It's the issuance.
No, no, so just, so.
Yeah.
So it's the issuance of?
I believe it's the issuance date.
Expiration.
Not when you record it.
So we issued this on 9/12/17, is that what this town's?
That's what, yes.
Okay.
9/11/17.
So why don't we say 9/12/2020? That's three years.
They'll give me one year from this year, then.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, wrong math.
That's all right.
2022.
That's perfect.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that'll do it, okay, there you go.
Or we could just subtract a year.
Why don't you just get the humor up?
Why didn't you just say two years, or just three years, though?
Because the project's gonna take longer than two years.
Well, because his special permit has a two-year life.
Well, I'm thinking, I went to that DIF presentation, so when they talked about when, when, listening to Connor's timeline, that's two and a half years out.
Yeah.
So why don't we just do it for three years to be covered?
So three years from expiration date, how's that sound?
That's wonderful.
Motion to grant a request for an extension for, to 466 Foundry Street for three years from the expiration date sometime around September 2022.
Well said.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor, motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Five Corner District Improvement Finance Program Presentation.
Okay, so I have mentioned to the board previously. Are you gonna ask them?
No, go ahead. Oh, yeah, I will too.
Thank you. That the town is considering a district improvement, or proposing a district improvement financing program to help pay for the cost of the Five Corners Sewer Project. I have a presentation, but I promise not to bore you with the full details. We can skip through or spend as much time as you'd like on any of the slides and discussion points. So I think we've talked about what a district improvement financing program is. It is allowed under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40-Q, and it allows a town to pledge a portion of new growth revenue in a set district to help pay for capital improvements that the community is making in that district. So you start by, say, looking at a district and recognizing that perhaps there's growth that you'd like to see occur in the district that wouldn't occur otherwise without infrastructure improvements, like the sewer project. You define what that district is, you do a projection on what you believe reasonably you can expect in new growth in that district. Then the revenue on that new growth, the town can designate all or a portion of that to help pay for those infrastructure costs. In doing this, it does a couple of things. Of course, it helps provide money that can be used, funds that can be used to pay for those infrastructure improvements. It really communicates that the town is committed in investing in that district for growth and development, which in turn helps attract private investment. So I think everyone knows that the Five Corners District has been targeted for economic development for a while, and there's been a recognition that the sewer should help bring businesses that can't go there otherwise. Essentially, what a DIF program is not, it's not a new tax. Again, it's, the revenue comes from new growth, and it's just the new growth revenue, the underlying base value of the property, or, I'm sorry, the properties in the district. The current revenue that that's generating, that's going to the general fund, continues to go to the general fund. It's just revenue from the new growth that you can pledge towards the infrastructure projects. It's not an increase, and it's not a special assessment. And another important point is it's not a guaranteed revenue stream. That new growth really has to happen in order for you, the town, to realize those revenues. So what we're generally proposing for the Five Corners DIF program is that 50% of new growth revenues be set aside and pledged towards paying for the infrastructure, the sewer construction costs. In the program, we've identified other potential projects, including roadway improvements, sidewalks, and lighting, traffic signaling, traffic management. The reason you wanna include those is if you don't include any projects in the program when you adopt it, you can't pay for those in the future. So if there are future projects, infrastructure projects, that the town wanted to undertake and felt they could use the DIF financing to help pay for those costs, if they're not included in the program, you couldn't pay for them, or you'd have to go back to town meeting, and you'd have to amend the program itself.
Can I interrupt you one second?
Yes.
If you go back just a slide, how many years is the growth revenue valued for?
So the program that is being proposed is a 30-year program, because that's the duration of the bonds that we're expecting, the obligation bonds that are going to be issued.
So you do a projection of the 30-year expected growth?
So we did a very conservative estimate on the new growth, and actually only looked at the new growth for the first five years after the program was established. And again, the reason for doing that was to take a very conservative approach, because it's not a guaranteed revenue stream. You wanna make sure that if, and part of the reason for doing this is to help offset the cost of the betterments that are going to be assessed to the property owners in the district. Right now, the projection is that they're between $25,000 and $30,000, and that's a higher range at the high end than the Queesit Commercial District project was in betterments. So we're looking at offsetting that. We're going, the town's going to have to make a commitment, once they know all the betterment, all the costs associated with the construction project, they're going to have to establish what that betterment rate is going to be, and we're going to need to subtract that projected growth revenue from that that is going to be pledged. So you wanna make sure that you really have a very high likelihood of achieving that new growth. So in this case, you could project growth out for either five, 10, 15, or the full 30 years, but to be conservative, we only project it out for, through the first five years. That doesn't mean that after the first five years, we would expect that there will still be new growth in the district, and 50% of that new growth revenue can and will go into the DIF program. But again, we just wanted to make sure there would be enough funds there.
So it's a conservative five-year growth revenue fund that we're taking 50% to give upfront for construction costs?
And that 50, you get that 50% on that new growth year over year, so you continue to get that on that, just that new growth.
Okay.
For the five years.
Thank you.
That's a good question. No one's asked that in previous meetings. I think everyone on this board pretty much knows that this has been a long time in the planning process. I was told by Dave Field that the town started talking about sewer back in the 1970s. You know, there have been several, the community visioning session back in 2007 with representatives from across the town, and the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. There have been several town meeting votes for appropriating funds for this project. And, you know, the, even the planning board with the approval of the Compact Neighborhood Overlay District, it's all part of the planning process.
So are the, is the 50% of new growth in the 30 years, is that right into the bylaw that town meeting will vote for?
It's not, it's not a bylaw, it's a program. But yes, yep.
Well, so.
So the program.
What happened to change that? Say, say, oh, we wanna change it to 75%, you know, in 10 years or something. What would, like, what would have to happen at town meeting, or just a selectman, sewer commissioner decision?
The, so let's say that the revenue started, two things could happen. Let's say the new development, the new growth exceeded expectations, and you started accumulating a lot more money than you needed. The 50% covered more than the cost of the sewer bonds, the sewer obligation. Then, on an annual basis, there'll be a review process to determine how the program's doing, and you, at the end of the year, if you have more money in the fund than you need to cover your costs, you'd sweep it into the general fund. So if year over year, you're finding that you're accruing more, and it's more than, and maybe you can either decide, okay, we're going to do some of those other projects, or maybe we're not, and then you could make a recommendation to modify the program. Maybe collect less, maybe lower it to 25%.
Now, who makes the decision on that actual amount of percent?
It's a recommendation that would be made, there's, there is a, kind of like a committee that's comprised of various staff, and you review that, and then you'd make a recommendation, and you'd have a warrant article to town meeting to amend it, and it would be a vote at town meeting.
So that 50% always has to go through the town meeting to go up or down?
Yes, yep. And so, and on the other hand, let's say you're, the 50% isn't enough, and you wanted to go back to town meeting, you could, you could do it that way.
And the, I mean, I guess the betterment subsidies, or whatever you wanna call it, would always apply to new construction also?
It only applies to new construction.
So not, well, well, say.
I think.
Whoever, whoever has a home or a business, long day, would pay a betterment as the, as part of this process, right?
Well, they're, they're paying a betterment, they'll be assessed a betterment as part of the sewer project.
And then, but now then, if someone wanted to put in, you know, a new building or something, then any, any new developments would have their own sort of betterment that, so this would go to betterments for existing and new?
Yeah, so what will happen, and the way that works, and that's, as I understand it, so every property along the sewer line will be assessed a betterment. If your property, let's say it's a single, I don't wanna, I don't like to use this as an example, but let's say it's the Walgreens right now, that vacant building. They, their betterment fee will be based on what they believe the likely use of the property is. But let's say that the use ends up being a much higher user than they anticipated. They'd probably pay a privilege fee to tie into the sewer. So the property itself would have been assessed the betterment, but that additional flow that they would be using, they'd be assessed a privilege fee.
But then, but still the, whatever, was there still a betterment allotment that goes to, from the 50% new growth money, is that still sort of, so is it a one-time?
So.
No, it's just on, it's just on taxes, not on the betterment.
Right, right.
That's what he's asking.
But the taxes are gonna help lower the betterments. So the taxes, I assume, will help lower the betterments for the whole 30 years, not just for the next.
Correct.
Well, because the betterment's one time.
The better, right, it's, the betterment's a one-time assessment, even though you can pay it over time.
Oh, yeah, right, because even if you have some.
But that betterment, once you're assessed that, that's not going to go up or down.
Like Walgreens has to pay their betterment, even if they're.
Right. Right. And once that betterment is assessed, again, that's, that's not going to change for you. And the amount that we're anticipating from the DIF will be taken into consideration when they're calculating what that final betterment charge is going to be.
Well, that, I'm trying to think of the presentation of the VFW, so they're anticipating, I know the betterment can't be set until the construction's done.
Yeah.
But they were anticipating the betterment would be, what, 28, or 30? And then you're gonna take about $7,000 off?
It's, oh, the betterment would, right.
Was it 30, 32, I'm trying to remember?
They're trying to get around 20.
I thought it, I thought it was between 25 and 30,000.
They're trying to bring it down to 20 with inflation or whatever, something like that?
Right.
That's around the same price as the other ones, maybe a little, a little bit lower because of the inflation.
But, yeah, so they're trying to bring it down to around, probably around 25. I mean, that, that final number really is going to be, depend on what the total construction costs were. So again, we talked about, I mentioned the, some of the projects that we included, which would be roadway widening, traffic management, sidewalks, bike lanes.
So the betterment wouldn't necessarily apply to additional fire or police services for the area?
No, the betterment can only be assessed for the sewer costs.
I'm sorry, not betterment, I'm using.
The.
I'm using the wrong term.
The DIF.
The DIF.
The DIF can only be used for capital investments that are made in the district.
So improving the fire station at the Five Corners is a capital improvement?
Yeah, I.
Not saying that that should be done, I'm just asking the question.
I'm not sure if that would qualify, but if it, if it did, and it wasn't included in the program, which it's not, then you'd have to go back to town meeting to get it added into the program.
Seems like it's more for like.
Sure, I'm just anticipating.
Am I answering your question?
Yeah, I guess my mind, my mind is going, okay, there's, there's money available, who's going to be interested in accessing that money?
Right, right.
And what comes to mind would be, you know.
The capital investments really need to be associated with triggering the economic growth or new growth in the, in the district. So I don't know, I don't think a new fire station would qualify. Of course, again, if you're, if you're taking in more than you anticipated you'd need, that gets swept into the general fund.
Yeah, so they could use it to.
Right, right. And that's, that's.
I don't mean to, I don't mean to steer us off into the woods here, I just, just.
Because then that becomes just extra money you can spend, rather than like putting it towards things that.
Right.
It would have gone to if we had never established a district in the first place.
Right, right, right. And that is the hope, that is another purpose for the construction there, is to try to generate new growth and new revenue that can be used, right, that can be used for other things. So this is just kind of what's, what's happened so far. You know, town meeting voted to appropriate the funds, we worked with Camoin Associates to do the feasibility study and analysis, which also included the charrette, the visioning session back in September. It was proposed, the feasibility report was presented to the Board of Selectmen, who are voting to recommend it. Then the financing program was completed, and that was presented in February to the Board of Selectmen.
So excuse, what was the, the first time that was a master plan was presented to the Board of Selectmen?
That's the DIF program master plan.
What, and what, what master, master plan of projects, or like, what makes up the?
No, it's, it's, it talks about the DIF. It's, it's the program that talks about the structure of the. No, it's, it's, it talks about the diff, it's, it's the program that talks about the structure of the diff. It talks about what you can and can't do.
Oh, okay.
General obligations, it talks about the review process, the annual review process, how much you're going to set aside, how much you're pledging. And we did the meeting on April 4th that Greg just mentioned. We're doing two public meetings, the first one was on the 4th and it was an invitation out primarily to the folks in the district who are going to be paying the betterment.
March 12th.
March 12th, I'm sorry. Yep, March 12th. And then on the 4th, we're doing a general invitation, presentation to the public at large.
What, what was the feedback from the people in the district?
Well, generally, they, they want to see this pass. They, of course, would like to see. Right, right, they'd like to see a higher percentage, but, you know, from a fiscal standpoint, you want to make sure you're taking a responsible position in, in pledging what you think the diff can support, so.
There was a, there's a citizen group that was there and they're going to present, I guess, on the 4th. And, you know, a few folks got up and spoke that they were, you know, people get angry about betterments. And the citizens group was reminding them that the sewer's done, it's already been approved, you're, you're getting, you have to pay the betterments, you know, I mean, you're going to be assessed the betterments. So what they're, they're telling their supporters. The diff is a way to, you know, I mean, the main reason the town's investigating the diff is to get the cost of the betterment down. That's, I mean, there are other purposes, but it's to get the betterment down. And so that's why it makes, so they're, they're reporting that out to their, to the people that were opposed to it, that it's actually in their best interest. Because it was, right, it was going to be 5,000 or 7,000, they were projecting it was going to reduce, I just, I forget.
So it would be.
Excuse me?
Connor had those numbers, but it's, so we're projecting $14 million of new revenue and pledging $7 million towards the, the betterment.
So it was going to make things better than that.
You see the 5,000 or 7,000?
I forgot which.
So was there just like a little confusion on some people's part that this was really like a program for the sewer, not really to help them with it yet?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard.
Well, there was some people.
I mean, it's hard, you know, when you get, you know, we, we forget, we're all involved in this, so we're, you know, we're in this building, we're, you know, we have an air to the ground, we know a lot of what's going on. But imagine being a homeowner, in a lot of cases, an older one who's, you know, maybe retired, and all of a sudden you get a letter in the mail that you're going to be getting a $28,000 bill. And if you're on fixed income, or, or even if you're not, you know, wow, you know. So there's a few people that I, I think didn't understand that, that has already happened, that was a couple of years ago.
Right.
So now it's more a matter of, and people got up, there's a few people that still spoke and talked about how they, you know, don't like the numbers, but it is what it is. You know, municipal construction is expensive.
Yeah.
But this, this is a way yet to get their costs down, so it's, it's in their best interest.
Right, right. People who are against the diff at that meeting didn't understand that it wouldn't stop, that it, that if this fails, it doesn't stop the sewer. The sewer is still going in, that's moving forward, so. Yeah, and I, I think that there's a, a lot of support, from what, what I'm hearing out there. So, and the district really is pretty much co-terminous with, with the sewer district. So we'd like to ask the planning board to vote in support of the program, if you feel so inclined.
So if you kids, I'll entertain a motion.
What, I feel like, what's the negative aspect of the diff?
Well, the negative aspects are, you know, what I, I talked about, it's opportunity cost, where 50% of that new growth is not going into the general fund. It's going to pay the, the sewer costs.
So, yeah, some, some people who aren't personally affected may prefer it to not.
Right, to, to have 100% of that new growth. And, and the argument there is, well, isn't that one of the reasons that the sewer is being constructed? And, and the answer is yes. I think some of the residents that are being hit with that betterment said, but, you know, but we're, we're paying that cost, so, you know, you may look at it from that perspective. I think one of the other potential negatives is if that new growth that's, we're projecting, isn't realized, then you, you're still going to have to, you, you have, you have to meet your obligations. The town's still going to have to pay the, the debt down, so.
You know, the tricky part, it's a slippery slope. Something, some, one, you know, on one hand, you could say, well, it is, you know, sewer's good for all the reasons you're talking about and growth and, and the environment, it helps, and, and, you know. And, but on the other hand, you could also say, you know, what if you lived in one of the other sewer districts in town that, you know, had slightly. I, I mean, if I recall, I think the downtown district here, I think it was 20, 21,000 for the betterments, I think Queeset's 20, maybe 24?
Around 25.
25, yeah. What, but what about, what about a, you know, and if you look at, a couple of years ago, someone had proposed, and people were upset about the, the downtown sewer district, the costs. And one of the, you know, and, and so they were hitting up, there was, there was starting to be momentum for subsidy, you know, for lack of a better word, to help out these people. But, in fact, I'll, I'll, for full disclosure, I actually got up and spoke, it was at town meeting, I said, well, wait a minute, I live up at Quonacote. Now, if you look at the master sewer plans that have been done for this town, that go out 30, Quonacote is never getting sewer, okay? Because of the ledge and the road, lots of reasons. So, you know, I put in the septic system eight years before Christmas, you know, I put it in, that, for 14, it cost me $42,000. I had $22,000 worth of just septic sand, I had to dig down five feet, then I had to come up nine feet. It's, you know, Eastern has lots of different types of soils, so one, so you could say, and I, I'm not saying this, but someone could say, well, wait a minute, you know. What, what, so these folks are getting, you know, benefit, what if someone lives in the district, well, why don't I get help with my betterment? Or, well, you know, to which then I would say, well, wait a minute, I'm, you know, because with the benefit, with, with the, you know, with the, with the sewer comes. On the downside, there's a cost, but there's also a guarantee, you don't have a title of fiber anymore, you know, you've got to sell your house 10 years. A friend of mine just put their house on the market, had it sold in two days, and just learned they have to spend $32,000 off on the septic system, you know, that they don't have. And so, so you do have that. So anyway, so you, the point, so someone could say, well, wait a minute, it's, is it, is it, you know, not, not equitable? But somebody said, well, you know what, we need to work together as a community and, and there's, there's lots of benefits to this town for having sewerage and for having economic development. And, you know, and there's a, you know, when you're on Route 106, there, there is a, a burden that sort of comes with, there's a lot of traffic. And it, it's not, people always say, you're developing too much in Eastern, so that traffic all comes from 495 and 20, it's not because, it's not because of the 122 houses we've built in the last five years in Eastern. It's, it's 29,000 cars a day coming through the highways.
Now, would this be completely separate from the actual, the hookup fees, right? I know the betterment's a separate thing, but this, does this fund, actual fund have anything to do with those connection fees?
No, they'd still have to pay whatever the cost is for the tie-in, yep.
Yeah, which is five, what, five to 10 grand, probably, depending on the house.
Yeah, that's what they're, that's what they're saying.
Well, yeah, that, we're going to go back to some of those possibilities out in that area, that you just don't want to, you don't want to see this money, like, you know, helping someone build a, you know.
Yeah, no, I heard you.
Other things, I mean, I think that's what.
But, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, you know, municipalities have been, this Connor and Stephanie and their team have been working hard on it. And, you know, it's, you know, we'd like to see, I mean, it makes Five Corners, we, we talked about it before, it's a real untapped resource, just like, and things are starting to happen. Remember a couple of years ago, people were screaming about the sewer on, in the Queeset district? And, but now look what Ed Walsh is about to do. And imagine, you know, we'll all sit here, I think, pretty proud, six, five, six, seven years from now, and we'll see, you know, the difference on 138. And then, and, and it'll happen on, this, lack of sewerage has held, you know, look at downtown, look at stuff that's happening, it's all because of the sewer, you know. We've been held back a long time because of.
And there's a lot of underutilized property down in, in the Five Corners district, I mean, it's not, you know, you're not going to see.
No, right. I got, you know, at the, the meeting at the, at the VFW, after about an hour and 15, I had to leave, it was so hot. I couldn't move anymore, so I, a gentleman stopped me out in the parking lot and was, was kind of giving me an airful about, you know, oh, you planners, blah, blah, blah. I said, well, I said, look, I understand, you know, I can't speak to someone's situation. I said, but, but, think of this, okay, let's say someone's in a house. And they would, this, he was bringing up the incident, there was a, a friend that was being hit with a betterment and couldn't afford it, and I said, you know, I understand that. I said, and I, I said, but, you know, you can look at it, you know, sometimes things in life, you know, I had cancer once, didn't plan on it, but I made the best of it, you know. So that, that, don't look at it, that, that property, and I knew the property you're talking about, that property on sewer has real value in that location. And, believe me, I said, and that sewer will add more than, let's say it costs $30,000, you know, $35,000 with the tie-in. Your property value is going up significantly more in this, you know, for that, you, restaurants would be interested in that, all sorts of things. I said, so, I'm not saying, oh, it may force this person to move, but then, you know, but, but there's value, there's, there's more than one way to skin a cat, so. I'm not trying to equate this with cancer, for folks at home, don't yell at me, but, but, but just saying, but it's, you know, as we, we have to move forward as a community in these things. It's always tough when there's additional fees and everything, but in the long run, sewer adds to property value significantly, you know, absolutely it does.
Yes, it does.
Anyway, so, would someone like to make a motion? Don't have to, but.
You want a motion to approve?
To support.
It's a support.
Okay, so, yeah, I'd be happy to make a motion to support the, um.
The diff.
The diff.
Five Corners District Improvement Financing Program.
Just say diff, they'll know what you mean.
So move.
Is there a second? All those in favor of the diff? Is that a 5-0? All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie, thank you all. Request to release lot, one, two, three, Donna Delia Terrace.
This is, I don't have a report on this, this is a holdover from several years ago. This subdivision completed probably when I, shortly after I started working in Eastern, so 2009 might have been the very end of it. It's a private road and for some reason, they never asked for a lot release.
It's Greystone.
We're, Donna Delia, it is, yeah, it's off of.
Greystone, you know, Greystone.
Off Allen Road.
Yes, yes, it's off Allen Road.
That's right, from the street from me.
Yep.
All right, that's why it sounds familiar.
So the, it's a private road, it's been completed.
So this just fell through the cracks kind of thing?
Yes, yep. We don't, we're not holding bond on it.
Do you recommend we release it?
I do, I do recommend.
Yeah, look, it is old, my signature's not even on it, wow. All right, I mean, I want to make a motion.
Yeah, all, and, all, all lots.
Motion to release all lots at Donna Delia Terrace.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, motion passes, thank you all. All right, let's do ZBA request for comments, first one's 250 foundry street for a variance.
So it looked like they took the solar panels off of the ones that were right up against the road, just the, yeah, where I looked at the plant.
Yeah, I saw it online, but I can't.
Oh, this is the.
Really? No, I thought they, that's what they were going for, was.
No, because if you read the.
Well, no, because both arrays were, were within 100 feet of the road, so they took that first array that was like 12 feet off the road out. At least, that's what it appears to me by the plan.
So there was, that's not this one.
So there was a, there was an array.
Yeah, those weren't like right on top of the road.
Right, right where the transfer.
So this is a variance too, I guess, still, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's what this, that's what this is.
Okay.
Yeah, he, he lists the dimensions here, so 56 foot 7 and 77 foot 11. So it's pretty much as we spoke at the meeting.
Right, so 56 is the north.
Wait, nah.
So northwest is the close, all right, so.
Yeah, it would be.
So the one that's lower is the seven, is 77.
Yeah, that's what it's dimensioned at, yeah, you could, it's, you can barely make it out, but. I would make a motion to support the application.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, all those opposed? 4-1. Yeah, well, just I'm a member of the historical commission and right across the street, they're in the midst of creating a local historic district. So I, given the, you know, I, I think a better solution is to not have that one right on top of the street and go down. I don't know, I don't know why, they're staying out of the buffer zone, there's pavement, it's, it's all, I mean, it makes no sense to me, so. But I'll, I'll, I've already spoken to the, I'll speak to the, the chair of the historical, and he can go represent if he would like. So I just, I just didn't see a rend, they, they had all sorts of bird's eye renderings, but it didn't really have any.
Yeah, well, that was true, but the grid drops off there.
And, yeah, not down below though, but I'm talking, I'm fine with these, I'm talking about these.
It doesn't, yeah.
Here's a historic district.
Well, yeah, yeah, I know.
Right, and those are right on the street.
And the thing, I mean, I remember just the other day, just the other day, when we were at that meeting at Stonehill. And it's only like the third time I've been by those and you forget how ugly they are. And it doesn't really matter when it's.
Well, their carport, that is, yeah, those were.
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, it is, it is what it is.
I think they can look better than that, I've seen carport solar panels that actually look better than that.
These are the same, I think. It's interesting, you know, that fence is already out there, that, that white, that wood fence.
But he was, he was going to put another fence on it.
I mean, they don't look great, but they're, it's, it's new, I mean, they're, yeah.
That one was there, but I think he's, he's suggesting another fence.
Why, so you're going to take that fence down and put up the exact same one?
There's another fence along the parking lot?
There's a fence along the entire front of, of Southern.
Yes, the, the.
The same, I think it's the one he was, I don't think he knew what he was talking about, it's the same fence he showed in the renderings, it's a real fence.
I'm going to have to.
Yeah, I know, I, I agree, I saw that fence, but, but he also talked about fencing in the, the equipment and the.
Oh, right, right, I'm just talking about the.
But that, but that is also going to be screened, that, that's going to be screened.
Right.
With abreviated, I'll guarantee.
Which would look great, because there's no deer, there's no deer out there. There's no railroad track, that's like Deer Highway.
Everybody, everybody would be looking at the deer instead of up at the, at the solar panels.
When they do that aerial with the drone, you won't be able to see all the equipment, because the top half of the abreviated will be fine.
Right.
But down low, we'll all be, well, everybody will see it, because they'll all be eating. And someone will go, daddy, look at the lollipop trees. Anyways, two, I digress. All right, next up, excuse me.
Oh, that's.
Blackbrook.
Can you eliminate, edit that last comment on my note, I forgot I was on TV. 28 Blackbrook.
Couldn't open this one. The plane on the back.
So it looked like just a.
8 Blackbrook, I don't know.
Big existing non-conforming lot, it's like, you know, like the garage, I imagine.
Garage in a mudroom, yes.
Right.
If anybody makes a motion, if we could just say as long as it.
Motion to recommend as long as it conforms with the height by law.
You're the man.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, unanimous, only. All right, we did that. All right, let's do the minutes.
Okay. You have the decision.
Yeah, so on the decision, I think, I remembered them, at the meeting, he, they had mentioned they were going to put down a, I don't know if you call it a water main, but actually a, a water. The decision mentions the, the water service.
Well, what it mentions is the waiver that they requested, which was for the loop.
Oh, that's fine, right, yeah.
Because then we couldn't find exactly, I think what they agreed was they were going to bring the main down the road and then pull the.
Yeah, we're doing the minutes.
Oh, sorry.
I fell right into that, I'm sorry.
He threw me for a loop.
You asked me, I'm like, what's he talking about?
Trying to take your agenda over, sorry about that.
It's okay, it's okay. Buy me a beer, we'll call it even. One, two, so page three, one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh paragraph, the one that says, Mr. Strange noted the Acousta Fence?
Yes.
Acousta Fence just needs to be capital A.
Okay, that's easy.
Please.
You're right.
And then down the, the next paragraph that says, Mr. Strange said he appreciated to the board, just board apostrophe yes, suggestion.
Board suggestions, okay.
That's my, see you rubbing off on me.
He'd snuck in the motion to adjourn on this one.
I did.
He ran, he ran out. Must have been going skiing.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes with the noted change is from Monday, March eleventh.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Motion passes.
I just thought I was abstaining.
Okay. Meeting minutes, um, all right, so now, chairs report, if that's okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, got a few things. So, one thing, so good, um, good speed estates, good speed estates, right?
Good speed.
Good speed estate, I got a.
Central Street.
A request today from Dan Farron to meet Stephanie, myself, and a landscaper. He, I guess, is looking to, I looked, the decision originally, there's stone walls that were approved and that were running down the street, and then, before work starts, and we'll have to word the next decision, the decision better next time, I guess, it's before the start of work, like, well, what work, that was supposed to be a landscaping plan, which we don't have, but it could be landscaping work too, you know what I mean, when you think about it, but, but anyway, so he now wants to, and correct me if I'm wrong, sir, but I think he wants to, he wants to supplant some of the stone walls with, stone walls and horse fencing, horse fencing.
Yeah, all I know is, yeah, he wants to make a change.
So, we're meeting tomorrow, and I, I just, and then I saw the list of people growing today, so I just, I sent out a reminder to everybody that, hey, this is, this is planning boards per view. So, I, I told Dan, that's fine, I'll come out and meet with you, I said, but, you know, you're gonna have to, whatever you're proposing, I'm not gonna tell you yea or nay, it goes before the board, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to put it in plan form, and you're gonna have to come in and talk, and there's no, so, if anybody's around tomorrow who wants to come, welcome to them, don't have to, that's, um, because I don't wanna do another sidewalk after, it's tomorrow at two-thirty, but, again, not imperative, don't have to, but I'm just, I just, in case you heard of the meeting, I'm not out making changes, I'm just like, okay, I'll go to this. This is just unusual, I mean, I've never, I don't think we've ever done this, I don't remember anybody ever, you know, changing, which doesn't mean they can't, but they're just normally just coming with a plan, and we talk about it, you know?
Well, was there a stone wall, then the stone wall is not very.
No, well, remember, there's a, there's an existing stone wall, we're just supposed to fine tune, but then, remember that, we have that, we have that, I don't even know, that sort of elliptical entry, I don't know what we'd call it, there's gonna be a stone wall there, and then for two-hundred feet, going down.
Right.
To make a nice country thing.
Over the else with their front end loader, and you kinda like took out the stone wall that they had.
Yeah, no, 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 the stone wall's at, I changed, no, the stone wall's at the right, but, so, so whatever, I don't even, so.
And I think that the board, what the board wanted was a typical, you know, a stone wall that you typically find in New England, which is not all the, I mean.
No, we're talking about matching what was there, right, because in fact, it even says no cut stones, we just want the farmer's wall, basically.
Right, right.
But, I mean, I don't, you know, anyway, so, I don't know exactly, so, looking at it, but I'm just, he's gotta come in and put it on paper, you know?
Yeah, he ju, he just came in and said, you know, I'm considering something with, sounds like a split rail, is, segmenting it or something, and, you know, wanted to do an onsite.
So, couple, oh, so, so Stephanie, so Stonehill's, at the end of last meeting, or I guess it came up, but we didn't really, so, yeah, we had that proposed zoning amendment for Eliot Monson, or something.
Right.
And my question is, I have lots of questions on that, and I'm sure the board will too, but that, but that was the first we'd heard of it, so what, is this time-wise, so this is, I'm assuming it's been, it's gonna be advertised as, I mean, is this gonna be one of those things where it comes to us, we have to vote that night, or are we gonna be able to give it some true thought and conversation and?
It's April eighth, I think you have time for, yeah, I don't think you have to vote on the eight.
Okay, because I, I just, I mean, I have, I have some real, there's some major questions with it, I, so.
You have to hold the meeting within sixty, no more than sixty days ahead of town meeting.
The hotel for Stonehill.
And we have to, and then you have to notice that the two, it's a double two week.
So, I can talk about this, right? There's things, I mean, it's not, so, you know, is it, so for some time, there's, there's been folks in town, a lot of us thought this should be, we, we could use a hotel in town, and there's a lot of folks that thought it made sense to, it would be nice to get it actually part of the, the quee sit comments, makes, you know, where the, you know, and then there's, there's been a few folks that have been working in town, and, just, so, at, recently at a meeting, I was pulled aside and, and told, hey, what do you think if they wanted to put a hotel on Stonehill's property? And, this was a town official, and I said, well, I said, you know, part of development is, what gets developed is, you know, who shows up with the money, I mean, I get that, you know, I said, it's not, and I was, I was being frank, I said, to me, that's not, that doesn't meet a lot of what we've talked about, it's walkable, you know, when you think location-wise, but that's a, my thoughts on that, we'll discuss when we have an amendment, but anyway, so, at, so that was, that was just a quick conversation, I thought it was just off the cuff, and then at the last meeting, you know, Stephanie brought up, you, you had, I mean, we, we'd never discussed it, brought up, there was this amendment to, to change the zoning, and, and we, okay, so we voted to, to discuss it, you know, to have it come up, as, which we should, but I, I just have lots of questions that come up after that, and so, my concern is, sometimes, I, I know how schedules get with, with town meeting, and I know there's been a lot of work on the diff and other things in town, but what I don't, I, I'm loath to have this come before us on the eighth, and find out we have to vote that night because of the schedule, because, and, and maybe we will vote that night, but maybe not, maybe we'll, we'll have some, maybe we'll have some questions, you know, some, some issues, so, that, that was, that was my whole, I didn't wanna be under the gun, because that's, I, even just as a citizen, I have this, all sorts of, there's tax issues, I have lots of, you know, and, and I, and I, I don't, it doesn't, you know, it really goes against a lot of what we've been talking about, so, but, doesn't mean it's a bad thing, but it just, once it's done, then there's probably only gonna be one hotel, so, you know, I, I would tend to wanna see the, you know, well, I'll, I'll wait till that night, I shouldn't get too deep into it, but, so, all right, so that's, that's definite, we're gonna have time to discuss it, we're not gonna vote that night, so, okay, good. And then something I just want you guys to consider, or put some thought in, because this will be coming before us in a few weeks, potentially anyways, so, we've been, you know, we've been, we have our flexible development, which is a great tool, and then we have our compact neighborhoods, and one of the things that's always been scaring me is like duplexes, you know, because it's, you know, it, it's tricky, and I still, and hopefully, I think this year, you know, we, we, Stephanie and I have talked a few times, I think, and I've actually been skep, pulling out some stuff, and I, I went to a class on it the other day at, at the CPTC, on some guidelines for duplexes, but there's a property in town that we have talked about before, and I don't wanna mention it, I'll wait till the person comes in, just, you know, but, what this person's thinking of doing is, this person owns four acres, all developable, but basically three developable lots under our current bylaws, and this person is interested in doing three duplexes there, to, because it really believes in a lot of things that we've been talking about, offer, really targeting young families, wants to offer houses that are for, you know, more affordable for younger families, is willing to do an affordable unit, so one of six, that's a good, that's a good percentage, right, what's that?
Sixty percent.
There you go. And architectural approval, limit the size, and a lot of these ideas were this person's idea, to limit the size to about seventeen-hundred feet, and give a sizable chunk of open space, and it's in a location that is, ties into a lot of what we're talking about, walkable neighborhood, so it hits a lot of things, we're talking about diver, diversified housing, this and that, so, I guess, so my, my charge to my fellow board members is just, I, sometimes as the chair, I have the advantage of, I, I get to go in these meetings and hear the stuff, and it's, I get to, so, just spin that in your wheels, and maybe you think it's a good idea, and maybe you don't, I know you probably need to think about the location and everything, and when that guy comes in, we'll talk about it, but just, so I just wanted to throw that out there, just so you can, to that, and, on that same takt of time to review things, I wanna really, and this, I kinda say this to Stephanie, I, I wanna, I think as a board and as a, as a cohesive unit, step one, we need to start to think about really enforcing the deliverables from our applicants, because I know you don't, you know, I, I don't, you know, how many times do I see you on a Friday and you're like scrambling at four o'clock to get something, like that day, you sent us that thing at Friday at five o'clock, you know, and I'm like, hey, you should be out here at twelve on a Friday.
Oh, that was the six sixty-one Washington Street report, yes, yes.
Yeah, but, you know, and I, and I don't, I don't want to, you know, and I, and I know this time's coming in, and we, we get the decisions here, and it's not because you're doing it slow, it's because you're not getting the stuff till Friday, and you, you know, you see it Monday, so, I just, you know, for us to, to truly, and, and we all have jobs, you know, outside of this, we're all volunteering, so, you know, you look at our bylaw, it talks about fourteen days for stuff, and, yeah, we could probably speed that up a little bit, but I, I think we need to really start to think about, and, and part of this, you don't have to answer this now, but part of this, think of what you need, because you obviously have lots of duties in town, so that, because I, I would like to be able to get our reports, you know, we meet on Mondays, I wanna have our reports the latest by, you know, like Thursday, the week before or something, or, because, you know, I don't, I don't check my, I don't have to check my town email on a Friday, Saturday, I like to, actually, I, I work eighty hours a week, I wanna take some time off, and I don't wanna, you know what I mean, and, and, you know, write something, when you first review something, you think, whoa, good idea, bad idea, but then, you know, it kinda, it gets going up here, so I just think we need to, we start to stress to the applicants, and, and to peer review, I've been getting, I know a couple of board members have spoken to me too, I've been getting a lot of complaints from some of the applicants, if I was on peer review, like not getting calls returned, and processes taking a long time, and of course, they're complaining about cost, they always complain about cost, but, so, I, you know, I just think we need to, to, and, you know, just because a, a peer reviewer engineers aren't perfect either, there's, you know, I mean, there are guys who have a, a set contract, and, you know, no one bidding against them, so I just think we need to take a conscious effort to, to, to get a more efficient and usable timeline for all of us, you know, and for you.
Well, I think that, as far as peer review goes, because I agree, and I would suggest that even Thurs, if you're talking Thursday before the next Monday meeting, that's still not enough time for you.
Sure, sure.
Certainly not for me, because that means usually five o'clock on Thursday, and then Friday's a half day, and that's just not.
No, but I mean, that's, I mean, so, yeah, whatever day you think you should get it up by, then back them up, right?
Right, I think Wednesday for, for everyone is, is the latest, and it depends also on what they're providing, if it's simple changes that you can look at, but if it's more.
Just, I wanna, just, I think maybe you misunderstood me, I was thinking, I'm not saying they should get you that stuff by Thursday, you know, like, let's say, so if, I think, I, I would like to have you, so we meet Mondays, I would like to have your report on, say, on, by end of day Wednesday.
Okay, you want, you want my report on, okay.
So, that means, so, I can't answer for you what that means, if that means they need it to you by Monday, which is where we go, or maybe they need it, you know, maybe, I mean, our bylaw says fourteen days, maybe it should be ten days, or whatever, I mean, but it's, you know, it just, we need to improve it, because it's not, there's so, so many times I'm reading stuff here for the first time, and that's.
I think maybe fourteen is too much, so then it just became like, okay, well, I'll get it to you when I can get it to you, but if we make it somewhere between like around ten or so, then it would actually be a, something that, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, you know, it's, it's Stephanie and Gary before her, you know, everybody's always trying to help, you, you know, you wanna keep the project going, there's always stress, and, it's always, you know, emphasis on, we gotta move things, and we want people to be happy, you know, applicants, you know, we want people to come to Easton, good for business, but, and you remember a couple of years ago, they did a study, and they, and we're, they were looking, and we were pretty good at planning board on what we would be delivering, and then they said, but there were a couple of projects that stretched out, but both, Stephanie and I, but we both knew what the projects were, it was nothing to do with.
Oh, yeah, that was one that was.
It was, it was, it was two engineers, I couldn't tie their shoes straight, you know, so, but, that doesn't show up in the spreadsheet.
At this point, the applicants are uploading things directly to permidize.
Right, and, and one of the.
So, so they're, they're way, they, they're finishing their work and uploading it on a Wednesday or Thursday or something like that, is it possible to, to, you know, just have a, have a lockout that says, okay, you reached this deadline, you, you're not allowed to upload it, you know, until the cycle restarts, or something of that nature? I mean, I, I realize that's, that's a good, that's a little bit heavy-handed, but, at some point, you gotta get your point across that, because they're still gonna sneak it in, if they have the ability to sneak it in, they're gonna sneak it in.
Generally, what I try to do, and we do try to manage this back in the office, is, I will, if I haven't received something, usually by the Monday before, but, you know, I, I'm already thinking, okay, you're not getting me something, and especially when I know it's a ma, a major revision, or they haven't gotten what the, the peer reviewer needs for stormwater, and it's a, a big response, it's not just a little tweak here or there, I will reach out and say, we haven't seen anything, are you planning to continue? Because, and, and often, they will, they will say, frequently, they will say, yes, we're not, we're not gonna have it, yes, we'll continue, more often, and it's like, no, we're gonna come anyway, and that's, you know, my ability to say, you know, the board's not gonna hear it, if, and I've, I've said that too, if you're delivering this on Thursday, nobody's looking at it, I, I can't look at it, and the board's not going to have time to look at it, certainly, getting something even on a Wednesday before a meeting for peer review.
Yeah, no, I don't, I think that's too, I mean, I think it should at least be a week, but I don't, I don't wanna speak for you, maybe you need even more than that.
So, you know, we do try to follow up and, and indicate, but, you know, it, that's the question, how heavy-handed do you want us to get? I can say, you know, but the board's, the board's not gonna hear you.
Yeah, based on boards that I've presented to, over the course of my career, we're very lenient, you're, you're very, you're being very lenient to them.
Yeah, you know, I mean.
I, I think you could be a lot more strict.
Say for like, you know, full circle, the, the Washington Street development, when we suggested the dumpsters were moved, right?
Yeah.
So then they have, so they have fourteen days till the next meeting, more or less.
Right.
So, in that case, they can't get you the plans fourteen days in advance because it's already too late.
They should be continuing.
Right, yeah, so that's, that's just gonna put it out, so that's gonna, it's gonna add a meeting to that segment, right?
Well, yeah, but, but, but if, if it was, if it was just moving the dumpsters, I mean, that's, I think we could all agree, we could, you know, we could get that, it really, it's really peer review, it's peer review where things get gummed up, because you're, you're adding a third, or you're, you're adding a fourth entity.
Yeah, that's what I was.
And peer review's not gonna be on time sometimes, and maybe that's because the engineer didn't get, who knows, it, it doesn't matter, the thing is, we just, you know, we need to hear, but, years ago, I worked for this company, and they were sticklers for paperwork, it was a development firm, and they would not pay you, you could do, you could build a whole house from, but if you didn't have a changer, or if you didn't have a, they would not pay you, and, and, and they were very good with the paperwork, but I used to laugh, I was like, because they were so unorganized as a company, and I thought, how can you, how can you demand such, you know, adherence to that when you guys are, are a mess? But, we are, I'm very proud of the, the way we work as a board, as, as a step, we, we move things quick, we, they're a very, we, we don't hold things up here, you know, we We, they're a very, we, we don't hold things up here, you know, we work hard, we move it. And so I have no problem saying, you know, and I'll say that, I'll start saying that at the outset of these big projects, and I'll say, hey, here's, just so we all know, you know, whenever we decide the timetable, you know, the bylaw says fourteen days, we need it at least ten days. Or I'm, I'm just, because I'll say, I said, we're done with, I'm not gonna have, you know, we're supposed to have you run around and, and we get a report on our desk at five minutes before the meeting, because that, that's, it's not fair to her and it's useless to us. That's not, you know, that's not, you know, that's not the, the process that we want. You need to be, you know, and if you, hey, if you're having an issue, if you're saying it's because peer review's not getting back to you, call Stephanie, call us and whatever, you know, but just do what you have to do to know that you need, you know. And if, you know what, and, you know what, if it, if, if some of these bigger projects end up going out two cycles, going four weeks instead of two, it's not the end of the, we're still moving them quick, you know.
We, and, and that is true, I mean, you look at, because when someone asks me, they'll, you know, they're coming in with a project and they'll say, okay, so what's the timeframe on this, you know, how long is this gonna take, is this gonna be? And I'll start going through, well, you know, you need to get the notice in two weeks ahead or, yeah, two weeks because of the advertising. And then, you know, if, if you have everything in really good order, I said, you still should probably count on two meetings because it's rare that you prove, anyone approves anything in one meeting. And then, you know, if it's stormwater and it, it comes in and the engineering isn't as complete as it needs to be, it may be three. So they'll, they'll be calculating that and they'll go, oh, I, I was thinking it would be three to six months and, and it's, no, we, that doesn't.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, we.
So it's, it's interesting when, you know, we do, you put, I, we do pushback and, and the, the folks that we, you know, the regulars, and you just, it's like, but I know we're moving things faster than most places, I know that.
We're very, I think we're very.
Combinating.
Yeah, combinative, thanks, thank you, that's the one I wanted. But just lately, it's, you know, remember a couple of weeks ago, there was a meeting and granted, you've been really busy with a lot of stuff and it was like, there was three things and it was like, you don't have time to look at it because they just got to, and I'm like, well, why are we, well, why am I even here? Why are they, you know, they shouldn't be here.
Well, because I called them and they, and, and said, I, I'm not going to have time, the board has no time, well, we're coming anyway.
Yeah, but that's, I go forward, I'm like, can I say it that night, I said, I don't wanna do it like that. Just continue, just, you know, because it, it's one thing if it was just a dumpster, we're going, we don't even care.
And I wanna say something, my report for six sixty-one Washington Street had nothing to do with them. That just, you know, that neatly, we quite a lot of.
Oh, yeah, 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 and we got that, I mean, that's, we got that last week.
Tied up, but that, but.
Alright, so.
Don't we have like a document as a town or like, you know, some, some places?
It's in the regulations.
No, but like, but, but I mean, like when they look at all the dates for our meetings and then it says, some, some towns will have like adjacent to that, like.
We do.
Documents must be uploaded by this date.
We don't have that. We can do that, we, yeah.
Because I feel like then it's in red in your face, if you're not, you don't have your documents in, you're not going to be on the agenda for the next meeting.
We can absolutely do that.
Yeah, that's what Wayne was sort of saying, but then how do you accommodate the dumpsters or something, things like that, no, I mean, right, yeah.
Well, because that's, that's a call and, you know, we've just got this and I know, and, and, you know, that, I, I think we, we can be given that.
But again, but, but if, you know what, if it has to go a couple of weeks, it goes a couple of weeks. You know, we, we, we're super accommodating to these people, so it's all, you know. But again, I mean, dumpsters, I just, probably not a good example, because that's a simple one, you know what I mean? But it's.
Or like at putting the sight lights that they pointed to that aren't really on that, like something small, but there probably could be like, I don't know, some discretion at like minor modification or like, I don't know, some, some way of like.
If it's a very small tweak and you're close, I mean, this is how I look at it too. If the board is pretty close to a decision, but it's recommended not to close because it, maybe it's a stormwater change and we wanna make sure it's there on the plan and it comes in that Wednesday or Thursday and I can take a quick look at it, that's, that's a little different.
Right.
But when it's something you really need to look at and make sure it's accurate, compare it to the previous, you, you just don't have time to do that when it's coming in.
That concludes my chair report. Anybody else?
Alright, so.
I don't know.
I know we have to sign something, right?
Yes.
Wanna bring us home then?
Sure, motion to adjourn.
Um.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, going both.
No, I, I am, you need, you need to sign the decisions for Lincoln Estate. I did have one of the abutters call me this morning and wanted to know where it was going, they weren't at the last meeting. I told them, put your concerns in writing, the board's closed, I mean, that's not gonna change the decision.
Yeah.
So.
We already voted, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
So we can, wanna shut us down?
Yeah, motion to adjourn. I think there was a second already.
All those in favor? Thank you all.